The administrative law judge.
Did you want to?
I'm just asking for clarification.
No, you're not an administrative law judge, but to our tribal council. And you're proceeding under section eight for the tribal council hearing.
Yeah, just what I read, to replace ethics review board with an administrative law judge. So you just want us to follow section eight, even though it's kind of a conflict?
So, understanding is that there was an ethics review board that was removed. So in place of the ethics review board, they now have within the code an ALG, or an administrative law judge. But there is still the process, so the council had a choice to go with an administrative law judge under section seven, or to proceed under section eight. And because there was no request for an administrative law judge, the proceedings went forward on section eight.
Okay, that was a clarification I needed. With that being said, you know, I I've sat through plenty of council meetings, I've watched, I reviewed during my tenure here with the tribe. And, you know, I can recall at least three to four times, we've had this other instance happen. Hell, I've seen scraps in this chamber. I've seen scraps at the counter, or Prairie Winds. But nothing's ever been done to any of them other individuals of the past, and I just want to point that out. You know, whenever it comes to hearings, and maybe I'm a little different in my thinking, but, you know, when it comes to the burden of proof, the complainant should be the first to follow this process. In this case, we threw Mrs. Spotted Bear right underneath the bus from the get-go. I, myself, have actually sat here and cruised through 2074. And I also looked at the complaint that was filed. But, in my opinion, the one paragraph doesn't really meet the burden of proof. It's it just, I just can't, you know, it doesn't say anything beyond the egregious and outrageous conduct. You know, in theory, a person would go into in-depth details as to why he's filing that complaint. In this instance, it's not there. I also agree with Mrs. Little Hawk. Everything that was said during executive session should remain in executive session. You know, there's a breach of confidentiality. During that proceeding, you know, and I stepped out to use the facilities when pretty much everything got heated. But at any time, any one of the council people could have got up and stopped the actions that were happening. Any person, anybody in this room could have slammed her hand down on the table and said, "That's enough." But we allowed it to happen. And, you know, our sergeant-at-arms, I was I noticed earlier he was given a gavel, and I don't know if he busted it or not, because I didn't get a view the entire scenario that happened. As soon as they called security, I ran in. And, you know, I grabbed Mrs. Spotted Bear and I kind of forcefully pushed her out the door. And don't get me wrong, you know, I did chew her ass out a little bit, without really understanding the full details, but my understanding is she served a 10-day suspension. And I think she learned from that. And so, with that being said, I think we've heard enough so far that she's taken it upon herself to remediate her actions with several individuals, and even the counterpart in this incident. And therefore, I'd entertain a motion to dismiss and reinstate her back onto council effective today.
That's your motion?
Yes.
Okay, we have a motion by Councilman Kelly, and I'm going to turn the floor over to Councilman Standing Soldier.
Aye, enjoy Councilman Kelly's words of words, I guess. He made it farther in law school than I did. And I followed the procedure for this complaint. That way, it would be done according to our ordinance. And I guess you only hear what you want to hear. And that is, we already stated, this complaint has to go through, but the provisions for the penalties have already been set down, so I don't think we're going to dismiss anything. And what really is upsetting is the man that sits there and says what happened years ago, it's okay for it to happen nowadays. Because that's how history is made. Bad choices, bad decisions, bad activities are done. But it's okay nowadays. Let's just overlook it, because, honey, that happened, so it's okay. We'll move on. We don't have to worry about it no more. But did he get a second on his motion?
No.
If not, I would like to make a motion with, um, do we want to read the complaint on Anna?
We didn't call for a second. Go ahead, Councilman Little Hawk Weston.
You know, just to comment on what Councilman Kelly is saying is, I think that I don't know if council, after we hear both both of them, I think that we do need to probably discuss as a council to say how we want, which way we're going to go with this, with both of them. But I think that, the way I look at it, is that we have a sergeant-at-arms. And I'll tell you, Sergeant-at-arms tried to stop the activity that day. He also told us, "Well, at that same day, Councilwoman Spotted Bear gave me a gavel to use." And he tried to use it. He was hitting the table over there, trying to stop this whole incident. And to no avail. Mr. Councilman Puyer was also trying to stop it by doing that too. Point of order. I was also hitting this. Saying point of order, but nobody seemed to listen to us. So, today, I want to say that, for the record, that we did try to stop the incident. But it did not stop. It escalated till it ended up where, like he said, he had to remove Councilwoman Spotted Bear out of the room. You know, I think we need to respect that. Sometimes we do that to our sergeant-at-arms. So I think that, just part of, I think, our decision today, I think all I would like to ask is, it's good to come and apologize to us as a council, but I think they need to apologize to the people that they serve to. The people out there are saying, you know, "How about us? We elected our council people to be in the circle to work with you guys." So we need to make sure we can do something like that, and I'm sure they will. I'm sure they will. But I think, I just wanted to say that today, because, you know, it was not a good thing, but I think today, we heard them, we heard Ms. Spotted Bear. And I think we just need to, I like to, since Mr. Standing Soldier, Councilman Standing Soldier's the one that brought this complaint, I like to, I think he needs to probably make that motion to whatever we need to do. Thank you.
Okay, Councilman Jumping Eagle.
You know, Chairman, I think, you know, this is a time for question and answer from Ms. Spotted Bear, and, you know, we're going around telling our feelings, and there's a time for that after the hearing, you know, amongst each other, like Sonia said. You know, it makes no sense to hold a hearing when we already have a judgment set that we're going to dismiss it anyway, so why sit here and go through all this and have a hearing and then dismiss it at the end? That's why I tried to dismiss it at the beginning. But Norman, Councilman Standing Soldier, said he wants to go through the process, and then he stated that he felt that a suspension was good enough. So, I mean, what's the point of having a hearing? So I'm going to second Councilman
Kelly.
Kelly's motion to dismiss.
Okay, so we have a second. Just, I don't know if any of you want to hear Councilwoman Halverson.
I think we're doing one by one, though, so.
So you, okay.
This is on her.
Okay, so, we'll run this motion, and we'll move on to Councilwoman Halverson. Okay, Councilman Puyer and Councilman Gosper.
Is this a simple majority?
Yeah, I believe so. Hang on, we're going to double-check. Was that just your question there? Okay, while we're waiting for that, I'm going to move on to.
If it's a dismissal, it's by majority vote. If it's to impose sanctions, it's a two-thirds vote.
Councilman Gosper.
Chair, before we make a motion, I think we need to go into executive, you guys. Because I'm not so comfortable going through all this, and just to dismiss it. Like Ryan said, we should have done that at the beginning, so where here we are. Let's keep going with it. But I think we need to go into executive and talk about this before we make a decision. Because if you guys want to say this isn't going to happen again, we need to talk about a few things, too.
Well, we have a motion on the floor. We'll run that one, then run yours, if that's what you want.
You know, the past hearings, we listened to both, you know, we listened to them, asked questions, and gave them a closing, opening and a closing, and then then we went into executive session, then we deliberated, then we came out with a vote, how we're going to rule on this. That's how, that's how it's always been, and we can't be changing the rules here. So I think, I mentioned before, I sat in a lot of hearings, and I don't think this was part of the process, so I think that's what I want to ask the legal counsel.
They're two separate complaints.
I think there were two separate complaints, so.
I mean, if we heard, if we just heard the next one too, then go into executive. And make a motion to come out on the first one, make a motion to come out on the second one.
Well, that's up to the motion makers.
Chair, like, how are we supposed to make a decision if we don't hear the other party, though?
It's a separate complaint. We didn't hear Councilwoman Halverson yet.
I know, don't you think we should hear before we make a decision?
So they, you can go into executive, like you usually do if you choose to, but the hearing itself is on the conduct. And in this particular hearing with Ms. Spotted Bear, she's admitted to her conduct and has apologized. So, your decision on what to do with that is up to you. If you feel like you would like to discuss it in executive, that's your prerogative. You do have a motion on the floor.
You do have a motion on the floor. And it was seconded. So if that's what you want to do, go into executive. We're going to run this motion, and then we'll run your motion to go into executive. Councilman Lunderman. Okay. Yes, I understand that, and that's the way I thought we were going to go, but we have, someone made a motion, one of the councilmen. So we have to, we honor that. We can just run the motion. If you don't agree, then don't vote on it. And then we can hear Anna. But the motion is on the floor, and we have a second, so we have to run it. Everybody understand? It's up to the motion maker at this time.
I understand, and he's probably not going to change his mind, because when he sits like that, that, he's not going to change his mind. You know, so I know Mr. Kelly, I can joke with him, but I hear what the rest of the council are saying, and that's how we always did it. But today, we're going to just make a motion to dismiss, which I have no problem with doing either. We can do that, too. But if we're going to do that, we'll do the same thing with Anna, Ms. Halverson.
Yes, exact same process.
Just to be, you know, fair, we got to do that, too, so I have no problem with it, but, you know, Ty's right, you know, that's how it was done. Ben James is right, that's how we did it. But if we're not going to do it that way, I guess we'll just have to vote yes or no on this motion.
Okay, everybody understand? Okay, secretary, call for the vote.
And for the record, I would like to state the motion. Motion by David Kelly, seconded by Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior, to dismiss complaint and reinstate Representative Julianne Spotted Bear back into council. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
B. Frandl. Tyler Lunderman.
Yep, yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
David Puyer. Craig Dillon. David Kelly.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
No.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
No.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Donroy Gosper.
No.
James Cross.
No.
George Dreamer Junior.
No.
Nine yes, eight no, motion carried. Okay, so at this time, thank you, Councilwoman Spotted Bear, for coming today and presenting your case. Yes.
The same complaint, just run the motion.
You don't want to hear her side?
No, we don't need to. We just set precedence with.
Okay, is that your motion?
That'd be my motion, reinstate her.
Okay, motion by Councilman Standing Bear.
I call point of order here. Counsel, people are listening, and they're getting confused. This is a public office. You should use your mic so that people could hear what you're saying. That's not just, that's not just for the circle here. The public is listening. They want to hear, so I just want to put that in there, that they want to hear what you guys have to say. They elected you here. You guys pointed me, so I'm just doing my job, and I hope you don't get upset, but if you do, then that's, I'm just trying to help you guys out here, too, also, and our tribal members there, too. And so now, we're, we did one for, one way for another, for one, and then we're changing the, changing the rules, the goalpost. So, but again, what's like, everybody says, the council says, this is the council, you guys, that's your prerogative. Thank you, and hope. Just use your mic when you guys talk, so the people can hear. Thank you.
Go ahead, Councilman Standing Soldier, then Councilman Lunderman.
Out of respect for Councilwoman Halverson, because of the previous vote, I don't know if you even need to state anything, because we have to follow the situation as it is, because there is no difference in either one of your complaints. Nothing that can be said will change the outcome. It's identical complaint, so we just go move on, and I'll make the motion that we dismiss all, everything on councilperson Halverson, and reinstate her to council immediately.
Okay, Councilman Lunderman.
Thank you, Chair. Just for the record, I stated earlier without a mic that, you know, there's a process that we followed whenever it came to hearings in the past. And when we heard one individual, then we would ask questions, we would get done with them. Then we hear the other individual, ask questions, get done with them. Then we would go into executive, discuss among just us council, and then we would come out, and we would make a decision then. Now that's how we handled it, but now, it seems like it went a whole other route. So, like I said, I'm in agreeance that now we just, you know, Norman is in motion for the next one, because they're under the same complaint, and they're both identical, so, thank you, Chair.
Councilman Greenwell.
So, to me, and that's why I spoke about it earlier, is it didn't allow for us to even spank somebody on the hand. It didn't allow us to make public record of conduct that wasn't agreeable to everybody in the circle, you know, how that day went. Instead of dismissing it, we should have came and said, "Okay, we accept your apology, and we'll note that for the record that you apologized, and that you admitted to your behavior, and this is your punishment." You had your three weeks of suspension. Committees took action to remove you as chairs of your committees, and that's the action, and that's the end of it. We could have called it something else. But today, you just dismissed it, meaning that this has never happened now. That's the frustration with it. You stopped the whole process like that. So now, I'm in agreeance with these two. If they first and second, I'm going to vote with them to just move forward, because it stopped the other one from moving forward. We can't hold, we can't hold any of the two unless we're going to hold you accountable now, and that wouldn't be fair to you. You know, we're going to, we didn't hold the other one, we dismissed it, like it never happened. But we all know it happened. That was the problem with that. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to run the motion. That was your second, right? So we're going to run the motion, and then I'm going to okay, Councilman, I thought Councilman Lunderman seconded that. Okay, so Councilman Dreamer, second.
Chair, before, though, you know, I think that, you know, maybe Anna wants to, you know, maybe apologize or something like that, but, you know, so, but if you want to move forward, that's fine, too. Let's do it.
I'm going to let her speak afterwards, just to be fair. So, secretary, call for the vote.
Okay, for the record, motion made by Norman Standing Soldier, seconded by George Dreamer Junior, to dismiss complaint and reinstate Representative Anna Halverson back into council immediately. Jeremy Rosales.
Yes.
B. Frandl.
Yep.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yep, yes.
Sonia Little Hawk Weston. Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
David Puyer.
No.
Craig Dillon. David Kelly.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man.
Yes.
Donroy Gosper.
Yes.
James Cross.
Oh.
George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
Sorry, Mr. Puyer. I think you said it, but I didn't get your vote. Thank you.
Fourteen yes, three no, motion carried. Just for, just for the record, you know, there was, it's not really, there's nothing in place, so maybe we can make that amendment in the future to hear both parties before we make a deliberation. Or a part of the process. Yes, I know, because that was the motion maker, because, because of a motion, so. Go ahead, I'm going to give Councilwoman Halverson the floor.
Thank you, Mr. President. First of all, I'd like to say thank you for allowing me to speak today. And just for the record, I just wanted to present a few things that went on with the hearing today against Julianne and myself. First of all, we both received the same letters. On April 7th, we received a letter from Secretary Tulentz that said, "This hearing will be conducted before the admin law judge, and a date will be set. And we will receive a notification when her next available date is." And then our second letter stated, "On April 10th, I have attached a copy of ordinance 20-74 to assist you with completing your answer to complaint section 7-3. You may send your response to the office, and I will forward it to admin law judge." A current date for the hearing has not been scheduled yet. And then, today, while we are sitting here, listening to Julianne's complaint, the lawyer, Brian, stated that there was no request for a law judge, that they were following section eight and proceeded forward with section eight of the Ethics Code. And nowhere were we presented any of the Ethics Code on on what we would have to abide by. But I just wanted to state that for the record, because I feel like Julianne and myself, our due process rights were violated with the complaint that was presented. And I do believe it would have been Mr. Standing Soldier's burden of proof to show that Julianne and I had committed that
President, this point of order, there's no sense going on, everything was dismissed.
I have the right to speak, Mr. Standing Soldier.
Councilman, I did say, and you all agreed, that we're going to listen to her.
And I guess, first of all, I do want to apologize to the Finance Committee that day for what had transpired in that meeting. And I do want to apologize to Mr. Ed Ironcloud, our Sergeant of Arms, for not respecting his authority and his position that he partakes in this tribe as Sergeant of Arms to do point of order in our meetings. You know, a lot of these issues that led up to this event in that day have been pretty tough to bear as a tribal council representative. You know, I come from a family, a beautiful family in Pas Creek District. I come from my grandmother, Emma Waters. And for people to attack me and my family online over a program that was for our children has been tough to deal with. Now, we have representatives, Donroy Gosper, who comes from a beautiful family with a beautiful wife and kids. Mr. Dreamer has a beautiful wife with kids. I have a husband I've had for twelve years and we share children and we take care of each other. And there's been a lot of things that have been, a lot of things that were being said that were attacking our integrity and our character. And I don't agree with that. I agree, I think that this is a place of leadership. That as a political leader, we need to be professional and think for our children, for this tribe. And when I step into this council and when I step into this circle, I put my personal feelings aside and I think of what's best for our tribe and what's best for our future of this tribe. And right now, we're being attacked on all sides of the government. Specifically from the White House. We shouldn't have to be attacking each other within this circle. We should be respecting our people enough to come together to make good decisions based on our future for our generations to come. You know, I'm a kind-hearted person with a lot of empathy in my soul. And I work hard for our Pass Creek District. And I'm sorry if I was out of line that day. But I did not scream, I did not yell, I did not attack anybody that day. And nor will I do that in the future. I will always stand here fighting for our tribe, fighting for our people, fighting for our children because there's suffering out there. You know, the summer food program was for our kids and as leaders, we need to look out for them. And I'm sorry, but I did my best to do what I could to get a waiver. And, you know, the effects of that have been tremendous. I've been threatened, I've been attacked. My colleagues and our president have been threatened and attacked as well over misinformation out there. And so I hope from today that as leaders, we could come together in committee and as council to make better decisions for our future. To take our oath of office seriously. To respect our tribal Chinupa and to pray instead of attack. You know, I've been through a lot as a person, as a mother. But I will always do what's right as long as I am in leadership for our tribe. And so I hope you do accept my apology and I do apologize. And I do apologize to Miss Spotted Bear as well, because she also comes from a good family. You know, Mr. J, Richard Greenwell always says, we're somebody's child. We need to look at each other like that, treat each other with respect and compassion. And that's our virtues as Lakota. We come from a good, look, Oglala Lakota tribe. We're the strongest tribe in this nation. And we have people, we have other tribes who constantly look up to us. When we're there in DC, other tribes look at us as leadership. And we're up there providing testimony, advocating in a sober, safe leadership for our people. You know, I don't do drugs and I don't drink alcohol. And I do my best every day when I come to committee and when I come to council and when I make decisions on behalf of the Pass Creek District. And that day I let a little bit of my personal life affect a decision to question. But I was tired of being maliciously attacked. I was tired of all these accusations that are unfair. You know, my children too are also attacked. But I pray for them. I pray for everybody. Because that's what you have to do. When you have kids, you pray for protection. Tuncahula's watching over us and guiding us. And I pray for our leadership. I pray for our President Frank when he goes to DC to advocate and lobby for this tribe. And sometimes I'm able to go up there and advocate for this tribe as well. Because that's what leaders do. They stand in front of the people, not behind them. And they fight for this tribe, not each other. And I'm tired of this division. And I hope that this is an example of what we can do to change this division. To look for the betterment of our people, to use this as an example, to be better, to do better. You know, I really like to thank Miss, Mr. Standing Soldier for putting this complaint on us. Because it gave me three weeks to really internally reflect on who I am and who I want to be as a leader. And so I thank you. You know, that's part of being humble. That's part of being a Lakota. And to step back and see myself from the outside was a good reflection of who I want as a character. Of what type of leader am I? And so I thank you, Mr. Norman. I know it wasn't easy to sit there and write your complaint on two women who are strong leaders in this tribe, who both offer valuable insight to this tribe. And it took courage. But, you know, I also, I also believe in forgiveness. I really am a big believer in forgiveness. And that's one of the hardest things to do is forgive somebody. You know, we're all human. Every single one of us in here are human. We make mistakes, but we learn from them. And that's how we move forward in life. But I do know that we all are here as leaders of this tribe, all twenty-one of us. And that's what we have to always remember, that we represent this Oglala Sioux tribe, our babies, our elders, our departed. And keep them in prayer, every single decisions that we make. And so with that, thank you for your time and thank you for listening to me.
Oh, wopilah. So we have motion to adjourn by Councilman, by Councilman Puyer, seconded by Councilman Lunderman. Secretary, call for the vote.
Jeremy Rosales. B. Frando.
Yes.
Tyler Lunderman.
Yes.
Sonia Littlehawk Weston. Uh. Blaine Little Thunder.
Yes.
Troy Little.
Yes.
David Puyer.
Yeah.
Craig Dillon.
Yeah.
David Kelly.
Yes.
Norman Standing Soldier.
Yes.
Richard Greenwell Senior.
Yes.
Ryan Jumping Eagle Senior.
Yes.
Lyle Weston.
Yes.
Bo Little White Man.
Yeah.
Donroy Gosper.
Yes.
James Cross. George Dreamer Junior.
Yes.
President. President.
Sixteen yes.
For the record, I vote no. I missed everybody.
No.
Yes. Okay, so you have seventeen unanimous.
Seventeen unanimous, motion carried, um. Meeting adjourned at twelve oh eight. Thank you all for coming to, to this morning, um. Lunch is on its way. Okay, lunch, lunch will be served in ten minutes.
We know, we know when it's lunch.
Ten minutes. Secretary's office will be serving lunch.